All the meeting's ordered. I'll rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Review of the minutes from April 25th, draft meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Open public comment. Is anybody on, any open public comment?
I have a question about that, Judy.
The open public comment?
Uh huh. I have a public question.
Oh.
About public comment. At this time, is it when you bring up different subjects? Or is there like something that maybe is on the agenda that you want to draw attention to?
Usually it's if somebody comes here or comes online for the meeting and has a comment that they want to make just about a gen- you know, a generic question or something. Because usually if it's something on the agenda, we kind of wait till it gets into that part and then address it.
Thank you.
And there's no guests? Any good stuff?
I have some good stuff. Seventh through 12th grade spent half of the day Friday doing green up activities all around town. They went down to the park. They went to both cemeteries. They went around the building and picked up every green bag that we got them and filled.
Wow.
So they did a really great job. So I just wanted to give them congratulations.
Thank you.
A lot of garbage.
Oh, yeah.
We saw kids up on Beaver Pond Road that were picking up also. They were doing a good job. They were happy doing that. So that was nice.
They'd be cautious nowadays on what you're picking up.
Yeah.
All right. Highway Department discussion, TAC meeting update?
Yeah, so I can be quick with these, but Bruce is our main representative. I'm just the standby, but I've been attending the meetings. And big news from the Traffic Advisory Committee is that the 10 asset-driven bridges list was submitted and Main Street Bridge number one was on that list. It was unanimously approved and has been forwarded on to the state.
Anything to add, Bruce?
No, I think that pretty well covers it. Glad that we could get the tax backing on that. That always helps. But the state is, will then look it over and then send it back to the TAC. You know, let us know what's going on.
Class two highway grant.
The town ranked 16 out of 33 applications, but was not awarded the class two highway grant this year. Only eight applications were awarded. I'll add that Proctor has only 2.2% of all class two highway in the state of Vermont, and this weighs heavy into the award, the algorithm award.
The Grant in Aid Project.
Stephanie Burke with John, met with John Corliss and I. We performed a pre-construction site visit for the Grant in Aid Project. We will reach out to a state representative to see what permits we need to pull to begin construction. And those are, like I said at the last meeting, they're right here. They're the outfalls right next to the garage. I imagine just some rehabilitation to the erosion that's occurred around the outfalls and then some riprap, which is just large rock.
Any questions? Okay, the marble bridge repairs and bid solicitation.
Well, unfortunately, we didn't receive any bids for the repairs that we need done to the railing. And I got an email from a, from a company that tracks these bids and said that, that that's kind of the way things are going right now. People are having a hard time getting anybody to do anything. So what I'll do is I'll just extend it to the end of May and I'll be more direct with who I'm sending it to. Instead of just kind of doing an umbrella.
Yeah, do you want to add Tedesco's to that?
Well, I did send it to.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, that was one that I did kind of pinpoint at the beginning because I know they've looked at it for us before. But I'll have to find a few other contractors out there and send it to them, I believe.
That's too bad.
Yeah.
Not surprising, though.
No.
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 We had a hard enough time getting somebody to clean the marbles.
And that was when the economy was.
Yeah, that took.
Right.
Way longer than showing up.
Hi. Beaver Pond Path updated schedule, everybody saw?
Yeah, I've given you a Gantt chart inside your packets. And the big news here is that it's still under NEPA review. The engineers, the project engineers, were hoping it would be out by May 1st, but it isn't yet. I tried to see if we could speed up the timeline because 2024 sounds kind of far off. There's a, there's a gap there at the end of 2022 from August to the, to January 2023. But that's just how long they're expecting the right-of-way plans are going to take to get approved by the state. So we'll continue to keep track of this. And as soon as that project is out of NEPA review, I'll make sure to have an update for the board.
Seven years, geez.
Seven years, is that how long?
Yeah.
2016.
I've, I've been involved in quite a few capital improvement projects. And I know linear projects that are harder to do, especially if you don't have easements granted, you know. It's different than the Willow Street project because that's our infrastructure. We already have access to these. We're going through multiple projects and trying to convince people into giving us some land, so.
Yeah.
The thing is, there's not a lot of landowners there.
No, you got what, Omia and Frank and.
Dr. Gas.
And Terranovich?
Yeah, I mean, that's three.
Whole lot. Sometimes it only takes one, though.
I know, yeah.
Anyway, I'm not sure if that's the reason why it's taking as long, but I know that historically that is usually what hangs things up.
It got taken care of.
All right, is there a motion to go out of the select board meeting and into the water, Board of Water Commissioners?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So Michael has provided us with an updated delinquency report. It's kind of been altered a little to make it clearer, I think.
Yeah, and I'm going to stick to the script here, I think. I promised you at the last meeting I'd have you an updated report. The treasurer oversees this program. She's elected as the tax collector. So, but I'll, I'll do my best to support the board and support her into kind of generating transparent reports. And I'll also continue with working with John to prioritize curb stops. Proctor's unique. We don't have any meters, which means we don't have curb stops, which is, you know, different. And addressing questions that came up at the last meeting, automatic, automatic liens are imposed on properties once an owner becomes delinquent on water and sewer.
Automatic what?
Loan, liens on the property. So as soon as they, you know, are 30 days overdue, they're delinquent and a lien is placed on the property.
Who does that?
It's automatic.
Judy, tell me if this, you know, needs to go somewhere else. But I got a phone call this past week. A person purchased a house in Proctor and they're rehabbing it. And they assumed the delinquent water bill and made arrangements, maybe a closing or prior to closing, anyway. They did buy the property, they closed on the property. And then it came up after the fact. It would be nice if the interest on the delinquency was graced, say, six months or longer. And I thought about it.
You mean on the how, on the old, on the delinquent?
Yeah, right. They took, they assumed the bad debt and made arrangements to pay it on a payment plan. But they're also being assessed 1.2% or 1.6% every month on the delinquency. My feeling is if someone comes in and purchases a property in a situation like this and they're going to rehab it and they're doing business in Proctor or wanting to make the, the house nice, as long as they honor their agreement, can we let go of the interest? Is that something that could be done? And then if they reneg, well, then the interest, of course, comes back.
My question is why wasn't it paid in full when they purchased the house? That should have, that's wrong. They should have paid it off.
I asked that, got no answer.
That's supposed to happen at closing.
I would think so.
What did the customer say?
I got no answer on that. I didn't speak directly to the customer. It was someone else. The customer spoke to this person and they called me about it because they thought, well, that's interesting. You know, that's an interesting point. So they just called me about it.
And they've closed already?
Yes, the 29th, I believe, of April?
Their attorney should have caught that if he did any kind of.
You would think so. I mean, I'm sitting there.
I'd say they're liable for all of it.
Yeah.
Ooh, just throw the axe out, Judy.
Because they should have paid it upfront when they purchased that.
They agreed to it, but, you know, I do think it might be something we could battle around.
I think it would have to be a pretty unique situation for it not to be paid in full when they purchased the property.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I didn't know what this was, if it was a foreclosure, I should ask.
Doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter. Doesn't matter.
What conditions, you know, caused this to happen? I don't know.
Lisa Jever?
Well, I would just wonder why they would be a more valuable asset than any other member of this community that you would be willing to waive theirs just because they're coming in when you have other people that are struggling and still paying the.
Interest.
The interest. Well, that's what you said. You said they came in to make an investment and couldn't there, that be waived for them because they've made a payment plan unless they reneg on it? So my question, that, my question will be, what makes them a more valuable asset to the community? And I have no idea to whom you're speaking, but I do think it's unique and they had to have agreed to the fact to assume the debt if they've already closed on the property.
I think that you've misinterpreted my, what I was trying to explain. If they assume someone else's bad debt, then forgive the interest rate. Unless they reneg on the agreement, in which case, then it kicks in, okay? So it's a policy in, in water billing and all that. It become, it would become a policy.
But there weren't, there's no, as far as I'm concerned, there's no agreement for them to reneg on. The agreement goes away when the buy, the sellers sell their house. It's no longer theirs. They, that debt becomes part of the new owner's debt.
Well.
It should have been taken care of at closing.
I, I agree with that, Tom, but all I can do is say, this is the information that I had, so I thought, well, I'd bring it up and inquire about that. There are questions to ask of this person, obviously, so I can go back and maybe get some information. Or I encourage them to come and speak to Celia or maybe to Michael or come before the board. That I couldn't give them an answer. I understand their position and I don't think it's a bad thing to do overall, but.
I think it's just making it more complicated.
Yeah.
Now we've got to track a new agreement and, you know.
No, agreement, agreement shouldn't go with the new buyers, I'm sorry.
No.
I agree with that.
Would you, after the meeting, give Michael that address? And I'd like to know why that was handled that way.
I don't know the house number, but I know what street it's on.
You know, if we have a lien on the property, then.
I agree, these should be handled, that should be all covered before.
Yeah, I mean, that's when, you know, the money is, is being changed hands. There is money available.
The thing is, it may not have been a lien.
They're automatic.
But if they were delinquent and had an agreement?
They're automatic.
I think they've, they're still a lien on the property because it's still a delinquency. I would have to double check. I mean, that's a good question.
If it's like $3,000, it may not be a lien on it yet.
How many days pass due before a lien is, or cutoff notice or whatever? Is it 90 days?
30 days. 30 days after payment. They're delinquency, get a notice and there's a lien on that property because they're delinquent.
We hope it's supposed to be.
Well, you might want to double check.
I would have them contact their lawyer.
If these people owe like 3,000, 2,000, whatever it is, and they know there's a lien on their property, why doesn't it mean anything to them? Why aren't they in?
Well, the lender wouldn't, the lender would know that and the lender wouldn't lend them money without paying off that lien.
If they're doing a title search, they should certainly see it.
Well, they have to do a title search if they're lent, if they're borrowing the money.
Yeah, so.
I would have them contact their lawyer and ask why. It wasn't a cash deal?
No, I say even if it is a cash deal, they still have to do a title search on the property, don't they?
Um, it depends on the seller and the buyer. If somebody wants to buy it without any, you know. Like they don't do it, some people buy without inspection. They waive the inspection.
So it's, you know, we need, I need.
But I say they're still liable for the debt and they should have been paid upfront before they purchased.
Well, and, and we're doing a lot of speculation and honestly, the only, I think it's the Board of Abatement that would have to hear this in order to decide whether or not there would be any forgiveness. Anyway, so it's really not even up, I mean, it is up to us around the Board of Abatement.
And so, yeah, so these delinquencies, I, I hope this list is easier for you to read because it's easier. It's easier for me to read, which is important as well, I think. And, you know, the notice postage date is when notices went out. Notices for shut off went out. So we sent out, actually, before our last meeting in April, we sent out 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10. Yeah, so I can, that's something that I can track because that information goes to John, who, who I do have authority over. I think sometimes. And so actually, we met this morning to discuss his budget a little bit now that we're getting closer to the end of the year. And he, he went on a, on a mission today to verify whether these had curb stops or not because I'm not necessarily 100% they're all no. So he went out today to double check on them.
When are notices going to be sent out here to these broken agreements?
So there, again, that is going to fall under Celia's purview. I don't know when an agreement is broken.
But for these two that we know that are broken, there doesn't even need to be a notice, does there? It's just.
No, there doesn't. Oh, I'm sorry, Tom, I misunderstood you.
Okay.
On this list.
So these are ready to turn off?
They're ready to go. And she actually told me last week that they were going to shut them off this week.
Great.
The, they're going to shut off the people you sent notices to on the 22nd? Were they broken?
The broken agreement. So over here are notes, it says broken agreement, broken agreement. I actually think I might have gotten 120 West Street mixed up with 48 West Street. One, you know, says that there was a death. So I think that those might have gotten mixed up, but anyway. I think the, the purpose of this exercise was just, just kind of get us, you know, the first step is give us something we can read and then in two weeks, I'll have a really nice, clean, updated delinquency report for you. But this is pretty updated.
A question?
It's pretty accurate.
When you sent out a notice on April 22nd, how long do you give them before you disconnect or would dare to go disconnect?
It, it would be in their notice when, when that's going to happen. So really what's going to happen is all of these that say 22 of April.
Yeah.
And we do these at the end of our meetings, at the end of the month at our meetings. So you expect, if they had a notice posted in April and they didn't pay, you'll see that a disconnect was sent at our next meeting in May.
Okay.
So, because you have that month buffer.
Now, these broken agreements, when they come in and try to make another agreement, what's going to happen?
That will be up to the person making the agreement.
If the agreement's broken, it's automatic shut off, so.
You're sure?
What if they break the agreement and come back in and want to, want to make a new agreement?
That's my question.
Yeah.
Ah, yeah, you're right. I think it's up to her, but I think it should still be, it's a broken agreement, shut off.
That's what I say, yes. Well, I think we can play this game, you know.
Yeah.
All the time.
But I think it's better this, because it's easy just to look at this, the top sheet and go, okay, this is where we're at right now with these guys, you know? And then all the other ones who do have agreements are also maintaining, they're, they're staying current, correct? On their current bills.
On the agreements?
Well, like if, if they're delinquent 20, like 10, like $5,000, they're still paying every quarter, they're paying their current bills as well?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and I, I did do a good bit of research over the last two weeks and reached out to other municipalities. Most town managers act as the tax collector, like Brandon. So, but that's a whole, that's a whole process that we'd have to examine closer to town.
How many titles does she have?
Who's that? Celia? The treasurer?
Town for treasurer and, and delinquent taxes, I think.
So, and, and I looked up Brandon's policy. They actually have a policy for delinquent utilities and it's 12 months. So they, so people have 12 months to pay back their agreement on top of making their payments.
I think most are like that, it's a 12-month period. Unless it's unusual circumstances, it might be extended to 18 months.
And I spoke, I had a meeting with Mary Ann Gulett today. It's, I think it's kind of the same situation over there.
Does Proctor have rules like that? Does Celia have rules like that?
Celia is elected as the, as the tax collector.
No, there's no policy.
Oh, there's no policy.
Not that I'm aware of.
But we used to have a different delinquent water, wastewater individual. Stephanie acted as it and she received a stipend. And then when Stephanie left, Rhonda acted as that and she received a stipend. And then Stan did it for a little bit.
Yeah.
So it, it's, and only Celia's only taken it over, I think, since Rhonda left because delinquent, it's different than delinquent taxes. It doesn't fall under that same category.
It doesn't. And the statute says that we can appoint someone.
Right, and we, from the time Stephanie was here, she always handled it, sent out the pink slips and was responsible for it. And then she left, Rhonda took it over. They received, I don't know, you'd have to go back and look in the taxes and, or in the book and maybe Bruce recalls. You allocated X amount to pay her as the delinquent collector for water and wastewater. I'm going to say like $4,000, but that could be completely off.
That, that historical account is correct. And what we've found is this term credit supervisor.
Yeah, that's what it's called on the statute.
And I've been kind of speaking with the LCT about that a little bit just to differentiate between the two to make sure we're in clear.
Right, and I think that's was Stephanie's title.
Credit supervisor.
Credit supervisor.
So stuff to think about.
Definitely. You want a motion right now?
Let's give it two weeks.
Okay.
But it's up to you all, of course.
Right.
I'm going to do a lot of reading up before I'm prepared for that petition, I think.
This is a hot topic because it has dragged on for years here. You know, I, I got a book at, a file at home that's an inch thick with these, you know, from, and the same names seem to appear.
Yeah, I can see how it would be. I, I've only, you know, dealt with it for just a little while and it's already, you know, I can see it could be frustrating. I would like to add that, that my relationship with Celia, the treasurer, is outstanding. She's been so much help since I've been here. And she, she was actually really helpful with, with putting these reports together. So, so, so she is there for me when I need it, which I am grateful for. But I'm prepared for whatever.
There for what you wish.
So when will these be turned off?
Well, notices went out and.
When will these, when will these be turned off?
I will have that update for you at our next.
We don't know.
Well, notices went out the week before.
When are these going to be turned off?
Whatever the statute says for the timeline is. So I think, I, I believe it's 30 days after the notice is sent.
Okay.
So.
And I think there's either three or four business days of a window.
Wednesday, Thursday, and the property has to be posted.
I thought the broken agreements, we didn't need to resend.
No, we're not. And note, the broken agreements, she, Celia told me last week that they're getting, getting shut off this week. And I can, and these all had curb stops, so I can make sure that John goes out there and does it. I just don't want to go out there and tell John to do something because it might have been the case that they came in here and made an agreement or worked with their own something that I don't know about. So it's kind of a trifecta of communication.
Would you mind emailing on the board when those are turned off?
I can definitely give the select board an update if things get.
So you're talking about the broken agreements, Tom?
The broken.
Well, yes, that, that's the only thing we can do right now, right?
So Michael, the ones that, there's four broken agreements and two don't have curb stops. So will he shut off those two broken ones, the ones that have curb stop and then go and do the curb stops on those other two and then shut those off or?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I'll tell them to.
All right. Good luck.
They, oh, but they, yeah, okay. I won't make excuses. They are doing flushing this, this week. But we haven't gotten it yet.
That's next on the agenda, water flushing.
Well, if we're done? Yeah, so.
All right. Is there anything else anybody has in the Board of Water Commissioners? Is there a motion to go out of Board of Water Commissioners and to the Board of Sewer Commissioners?
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The wetland permit.
Yeah, so the permit for, the wetland permit for Willow Street Sewer Project is under review. The letters have been mailed out to surrounding landowners. And this is important that anyone who wishes to comment can visit enb.vermont.gov. The permit number is 2021-1137 and the public comment period ends May 20th.
Two weeks.
Mm-hmm.
Anybody have any questions? Willow Street loan reimbursement.
I've submitted reimbursement for the CWSRF loan in the amount of $23,087. This is a little more backdated than I'd like for them to get, but a few amendments had to be made. The state, we, we had some extra costs from permits and legal fees to gain easements and prove easements with the state in, in the amount of $6,000. But keep in mind that bids for construction came in pretty low, so we're definitely well within the project budget.
Anybody have any questions? Is there a motion to go out of the Board of Sewer Commissioners and to the regular select board meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Okay, manager's report.
Yes, so I'm going to try to share my screen, I think, if I can. I don't screw stuff up here, too bad. I probably can't do it. I don't know why it's not working. Okay, oh, I think, I think everybody can see that. All right. So we're not there yet. We're almost there. I, I'm still performing the duties of interiming, interim zoning administrator. I have nothing else to add towards that, but we're still advertising. The Mortimer Proctor Playground Award, the Mortimer, Mortimer Proctor Trust has contributed $46,500 towards the construction of a playground located at the trailhead of the carriage trail Towards the construction of a playground located at the trailhead of the Carriage Trail, next to the skating rink and the baseball fields. The Parks and Rec Committee is meeting Wednesday to plan a bottle drive, to fund a recognition sign. Um, just kinda maybe naming it one day or, or just giving recognition to Mortimer Proctor Trust. And along with some other items like benches or what have you. So if you can see it out there in virtual land, that's our, uh, that's the, uh, that's the playground. What do you think?
It's like a Rorschach test.
It's like what?
A Rorschach test, inkblots?
Well, it was, uh, yellow and red.
Yeah, it was pretty cool, actually, some of the colors.
Yeah, it was nice.
And the colors, they like blend it more like pale, the green, the dark, the wood color, and yellow and stuff, so blends better with the trees.
We've got a few trees that we need to take care of over there, um, it, it's, that is just kinda the only thing that makes it a bit of a dangerous spot. And we'll get to this later, but Lisa and I went up to the pool, and I mean, you've got like, uh, limbs, you know, four inches around that are just impaling into the ground, so.
Right.
We probably need to fix that before it becomes a problem. Wow, I was just seeing how dug in there it was.
I think you could still go see him.
Now, that's what you gotta record on the iPhone, not him just trying to get some lights, uh, lifeguards.
Alright. Uh, Ricky Miles told me he was gonna be here last week to make the roof repairs, but I'll have to bug him again, uh, this week to come out and do it.
Yeah, I would really push him.
Yeah, I'll call him.
Cause next week's supposed to rain all week.
Yeah.
This week's nice.
I actually got an email from, uh, Wal- the Wallingford Town Administrator, and they're looking for someone to fix their roof and can't find anybody, so. Because people don't have the availability is why I've not kinda gone elsewhere, I've been sticking with, hey Ricky. Yeah. Um, hey, transfer station, spring, fall, bulky waste drop off. Uh, we had over a hundred and fifty people come by the transfer station, and big thanks to the Public Works guys who helped out. Uh, three dumpsters were filled and compacted, not including scrap metal and yard brush. And everybody who came by was extremely grateful for the service. Pool preparation for summer twenty twenty two, like I said, Lisa Mizer, um, will be getting, I didn't say this, but Lisa Mizer's gonna be getting the pool ready for us this season. Which is good stuff. And, uh, her, me and John went up there to plan cleanup efforts. It is important to note that we still need more lifeguards to achieve our four day schedule. Uh, inquiries for the position can come to Lisa or the Parks and Rec Committee, uh, but preferably directly to Lisa. At the library.
How many do we have?
I think we've got three.
We have, uh, uh, four. I just got somebody recertified and I have someone that just inquired that needs to take the course, but the course isn't until like June fourth or something like that, so. She's supposed to be calling, but there's a game today.
That's good, though.
Yeah, that's great news.
So, but I don't know, you know, it's, you get out five and they only wanna work, you know, two days or something, so, you know. They're all pretty much seniors.
Okay, I mean, it, it'd be to their advantage if it was like, instead of like, they couldn't get a lot of hours working, you know, five hours there and then ten hours somewhere else. We could just say, hey, you can work twenty five hours a week here, you know, or something, making it their, their full-time job for the summer or something.
Yeah, I think it's more that they're seniors.
Yeah.
And they, they're already seniors now, so.
Yeah, which means it's something to think about for next year, cause historically you have kids that you kinda feed into the program. And, um, you know, a couple of these who might be able to, but, uh, you know, there's no guarantee.
Right.
Yeah, alright, I should be able to roll through these here, Sheriff's Report Corrections, uh, there were some errors in the report at our last meeting. Where the, the deputies were allocating time outside, outside of the town, uh, that was fixed. I submitted the Local Hazard Mitigation Plan Quarterly Report, and we're talking more about the Local Hazard Mitigation Plan later on in the meeting. The Treasurer submitted our report for the standard allowance, so that was done on time. Um, this, oh, I attended a, um, a BCA training with the BLCT MAC team. They actually did like a mock, uh, BCA meeting, so it was pretty informative and, and interactive. One of the better trainings I've been to. Implementation Grant Audit, this took a little bit of time, and this is the audit for the work that was done to the side of the building here. Uh, I, I had to dig through some pretty big folders. Stan kept really big binders, so, uh, but I got all the information that the state required. And next week, we'll be doing a virtual walkthrough with them. Green Up Day Activities, uh, Kerry Covey handing out bags at the pond, and I, I did see a lot of kids walking around town, so thanks for everyone who participated in that. Green Up Days, yeah, that is something else, I mean, all over, I, I even saw it on the weather, uh, report. Like Green Up Day was, was it Saturday? Yeah, so it had the weather report and then under it's Green Up Day, so that is really cool how much activity goes on there with that. And then, um, the Vermont Marble Museum and Preservation Trust of Vermont Letters, letters to support are in your packet. Two are for grants to upgrade the new marble museum space and promote exhibits. And then the third was to the Preservation Trust of Vermont Board as they, they plan to sell the building. Uh, and, and the two for the marble museum, one's for an HVAC system and the other one is for an exhibit. Uh, what's that called, the, uh? It looked kinda neat, I read up on it, the, uh, the man with the.
The carver with the ripped apron?
Carver with the ripped apron. So, that'll be really exciting if they can get that moving forward, and they still hope to open this summer with a smaller venue, ten thousand square feet, I believe, is the smaller. Portion of the building. Lastly, I, I might take a few days off beginning of next week, I've, I've got a little bit of time saved up and I use it or I lose it, so. And that's, uh, that concludes my manager's report.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Alright, action items, everybody sign the bills? Sheriff's Report, anybody have questions on the Sheriff's Report? Facility Use Agreement, fee waiver and obligation. So Michael has in here about, um, just kind of like all the facility use agreements with the schools, um, or not-for-profits. To basically, um, you know, have the facility use agreement when staff's not present. Um, but when they're there, not to, and then have no down payment when it's related with the school function and activities. Is there any discussion on that? You see, there's three, I think, in front of us. One for the skating rink.
Preservation Parade.
Youth League Field and the parade. The only question I had about the parade was, do they get police officers to, they do themselves, right?
I was about to make an up, an, an update to that, too, that's the Memorial Day Parade, right?
No.
Oh, that's something different, okay.
This is for the graduation one.
Okay.
But for the, um, Memorial Day, yeah, we get them.
Yeah, and the sheriff called me today, or Lieutenant Bennett called me today on that.
Okay.
They can give up two. So I told him one for, uh, an escort, one at the library, and then we'll figure out something down here.
Yeah. Select board can join hands and just make a chain across their house and nobody can drive through.
Big game of Red Rover.
Okay, everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Any questions? Alright. Okay, adopt local hazard mitigation plan.
Or do you wanna make a motion to waive the down payment for, um?
Oh, yeah, okay. Um, is there a motion to waive the down payment on facility use agreements for Proctor schools and not-for-profits that serve a legitimate public and community good?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, did you need a motion on the other one, too?
I don't think so, we're gonna work with the Parks and Rec Committee on that.
Right, okay. Alright. Is there a motion to adopt the local hazard mitigation plan?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, hazard mitigation plan is approved. Is there a motion? To move to have the town manager seek at least three bids for a heat pump?
Yeah, I think this is gonna breach our, uh, procurement policy, which requires me to seek bids over anything, um, anything over five thousand dollars, I've got to get at least three bids on. They don't have to be closed, um, but what I'll do is I'll just have them send me an email and then I'll provide them to you in, say, a month.
How much are heat pumps?
Uh, the last, the last, we got a quote from Patch, uh, in twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, maybe? And it was, it was breaching the, the limit that I just, yeah, spoke about.
Let's get the quotes and we can look at them and just make.
Yes, yeah, there are rebates and.
Hopefully you'll get three quotes.
Yeah, true. Yeah, but our Stoneville Historic, Stoneville in there, too.
That's something I'm gonna have to look into as well.
We do.
To what? What do we have to look into?
Well, I don't know who owns the building, so what, I don't know who we have to talk to to get something installed on the wall.
We own it until we don't use it anymore.
We don't own it, we have to use.
So.
Right, but it's kinda.
Yeah.
You guys did a bunch of work not that long ago at the church, didn't you?
When you sold the Parsonage. When you sold Russ's old house.
Yeah, we did.
Didn't you have to get the signatures from all the Proctors to do that?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Was there like a primary contact or is, or is it just an, an array?
There is, I think, maybe a hundred and fifty, two hundred people.
Hope we don't have to get them all to agree on it.
We did, no.
They had the same type of deed that we had on this building.
Okay.
And I think in the deed it says you're not allowed to alter this room, this would be.
Yeah, well.
I guess that would be down the lane records, huh?
Yeah, but I'm pretty sure that when we were doing the, um, improvements, that was one of the things, that, what do they call this, Ben?
The Legion Hall.
Yeah.
This room.
Oh, they call it the what? Legion Hall?
This is, technically, this is an American Legion, yeah.
Yeah, and I'm pretty sure that that was one of the things when they wanted to do stuff, that this was the space they couldn't to alter.
This space we can't touch, that's fine, that's fine, but this space we can't.
So.
That window pulled on here.
But just something to think about.
Yeah, yeah.
Because the other thing that I've always said is, the longer between the time that you guys sold that house. That we wait to maybe contact the Proctors, the more of them are gonna move, I mean, you guys have a list right now that we could at least start off of.
What it took us?
It took over a year, didn't it?
Two, oh, two, three years to get all the signatures.
Oh, wow.
To sell a house.
Yeah.
So you had to get all, every single one of the one fifty or whatever number it was?
Cause they all get a piece of it?
Yes. And they're scattered all over, probably some of them out of the United States.
Wow.
Just get quiet air conditioners all day.
Camouflage.
It'd be a lot easier.
But I, I'd say get the, get the bid, because I mean, that area and that area, it's a start at least.
Yeah. Well, and maybe if we wanted to own the building one day, the Bo- Board might be interested in creating a committee or something to take on that big project like you guys did up there, Bruce.
Yeah, I know, we had, uh, lawyers involved and.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah.
So we're not gonna be doing yoga in here or anything anytime soon, huh? Yoga classes or anything?
As long as you don't alter the room.
As long as you don't alter the room.
Yeah, I'm sure we've got records of the names, but that was, oh, god, eight years ago.
I was gonna say, less than ten, but not much.
Probably a good majority of that aren't even on that list anymore, cause they're not here anymore.
Yeah, but there's probably. Some younger ones.
Oh, yeah, geez, it's probably three hundred fifty people.
Okay, so I would move to allow the town manager, ask the town manager to get three bids for, yeah. Key points.
Okay. I think we did, oh, I thought we already did. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anything else in the regular for select board meeting? Alright.
Go ahead, yeah, we've got a motion to.
Yeah, is there a motion to enter into executive session to discuss confidential attorney-client communications made for the purpose of providing professional legal services to the body. Regards to Green Mountain Power versus Proctor, and the provisions of Title One, Section three one three A one.
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.